Welcome to the work session.
Roll call Haley. Mylan. Well, Danny Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Broneman.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Haley. We have a form.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Tom, my second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Well, Danny Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Broneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before we go, Bill, to any updates you may have, or do any of the board members have any updates from any of the meetings that they attend separately, UG or otherwise? Tom, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. David, have you joined us? Okay.
There is a caller on there. I'm asking him to unmute right now. It's Samsung. I don't know what that means.
You've asked him to unmute?
Yeah.
He's driving, so he may not see that. Is it star nine? Unmute him?
I don't have the phone controls here. I apologize.
Okay.
All right.
Is he planning to arrive at some point?
Yes, he won't.
Maybe we could take a few minutes, circle back for as a report.
Sure. You bet.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have anything? Your reports?
If it's okay, I'll just wait until we get into regular sessions with my comments.
Sure, of course. So that brings us to the Economic Development Fund request.
Yes. So, committee, Matt, we had given an Economic Development Fund Committee two proposals. You guys have talked and given you my recommendations on it. So I'm president. I'll just turn it back over. Do you want, how do you want, do you want to do home fields first? Or you want to do CABA first? Or whatever, where do you want to go here?
We can do home field first.
Okay, and I do have Patrice here.
Yep.
So, Patrice, if you can set the table, there's questions. Thank you. So within home fields, there's certainly a two-plus-million-dollar request and we discussed the amount of money that, the amount of public dollars that are already, that's already going towards that development and at least for me, I didn't see how I could in good conscience recommend the board in any BPU dollars for that. Now, we are already and have been spending dollars, or probably likely still spend dollars, getting our ma- major infrastructure out to those locations. There is cost to the utility already, and then there's also a cost that the developer has to bear in terms of hooking up to our facilities, getting, getting the infrastructure on their side and making connections through their property. So, you know, what I am starting to lose track of is all the conversations that's going on between home fields and the unified government as they continue to advance discussions on more development, and they're seeking more star bond dollars to go into that project. And I know that just the other day, they had a, they had a, they a meeting about approving some other chip dollars and, I'm sorry, Lord.
CID.
CID, CID funding request. I think David Haley was on that committee. So there's quite a lot there. What I'm hearing is, at least from staff, is there's still a lot of mis- disagreements going on between the BPU staff and some of the developers on how we move forward with the next phase. This is not, also included in this Economic Development Fund request to the tune of another $6 million that they're wanting us to pay for. So all said, I'm not sure where it's going to, when they, when they build out everything and what their investment is going to have to be on the electric side and/or the water side. So I wouldn't be surprised if that didn't, you know, not be a $15 or $20 million at some point, but I'm, I don't want to, but I don't want to say that it will be there because I certainly don't know enough about the project, other than there is the first phase, here's what they're requesting us to pay for. And then there's conversations about other infrastructure that's going to be needed, you know, whatever third or to feel phase, if there is that many, it may come up later, so.
Yeah, one question I have is, and it just sort of dawned on me after all of the iterations of their meetings with unified governments, aside from this Economic Development Fund request, which far exceeds, obviously, our allocation, has, Home Field has, have developers come and met with BPU itself?
They, I know they're meeting with our electric engineering staff about.
Initially, Mr. Napper came in and met with Carlos and myself and asked about the Economic Development Fund in the process, so we explained that to you. And pretty much at that point, he wasn't saying as far as what their request is going to be or any.
But he, he did know, Patrice, well, a normal request to us is how much that is. He didn't, we explained that.
Explain that to him.
Okay. So I guess it's, obviously, so obviously, those of us on the committee have had an opportunity to look at this and discuss it with staff. And so I would ask the other board members who are not on the Economic Development Committee if they have questions, comments, anything else. So Mary, Tom, and David, you're on, and can unmute yourself. I welcome your guys' comments and, and questions.
At our last meeting, when, when you all met to discuss this, I was here early enough to be listening in the boardroom, so I'm up to date as to what you all discussed at the, the committee discussed.
Okay.
Did you have any?
I don't have any questions, or I'm just kind of going on what I, what I heard from this committee, your committee, Mark committee.
Madam Chair, you. Sorry, Tom. I was just going to ask the president if she would give the outcome from the committee meeting, what, what our recommendation was.
I certainly can. Tom, did you have some thoughts or comments or questions?
My thought, yeah, my thought was that this proposal does not fall within the scope of our economic development policy, and I don't see how we could, you know, we could, you know, allocate that much money or change the policy that much. So that's all I've got to say on it.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm unmuted, but.
You're, you are unmuted, David. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I did not hear the beginning of the discussion. I've just called in. But from what I have heard, I am concerned how broadly that scope would be. I mean, and, and if in fact there is some precedent, or if there has been some precedent for this kind of allocation to, to be done. I did not hear if this is the case. Is this unprecedented, or would it be?
David, this is unprecedented. And to Jeff's point earlier, the Economic Development Committee, when we met, our recommendation is not, is, is not to, I guess, not to take this to the full board. And our recommendation, if it goes to the full board, is to deny it.
Well, this is Jeff. So I think that in the past, the way we've done economic development was, one way or the other, did we vote on, in a request, either approve or deny in the full board during the regular session, just so that it's an official, and then, Patrice, you will communicate to the applicant.
And by policy, the policy that you guys just adopted, what, two years ago? A year ago, two years ago?
Just two years.
Two years ago, so no matter what the, the committee decides, it still goes.
It has to go to the.
Yes. Okay. So David, did you hear that? So this will go to the full board this evening?
All right. All right.
In the regular session?
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I? So David, I'll, I'll give a little bit of history on this, but before I do, I, I did mention earlier before you were, I don't know if you heard, if you were muted or trying to unmute at that time. There was a meeting just a few days ago at the standing committee. I think that you participated in, right?
Yes. I was going to get my report. But yes.
Okay. Okay. You know, if you, if you, I guess I can make my comments and, and then get out of the way, or if you want to give your report, it's up to the, it's up to Rose.
No, no, please, if you will. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, well, so just going back in history, we all knew that that a lot of the things that Richard Napier was involved with, it's kind of a result of Flirabon closing down, getting out of business, having the, having the undeveloped part of the water park, trying to sell off the property, and then they hired Richard Napier to come in to help sell off their property, you know, thus all the power loss and everything else was built out of the result of that. Well, in the, back in those days, we were having a number of issues trying to get them to install the infrastructure necessary to get power to them. They were wanting the costly shortcut, all of our designs. And, and what that meant was, had we agreed to it, we could have put in infrastructure that we wouldn't have, never been comfortable with. Years, years later, the developer is completely gone, has made all of his money. It's back on the back of the customers and BPU to have the support and make all this stuff work for the next 40 years, okay? And, so we stood our ground to say, no, you know, this has to go in based on our specifications, and we're doing it not only for the benefit of the utility, but for the benefit of the facility, and the customer is going to occupy those buildings. And so it was not easy conversation. We went back and forth quite, quite a lot, so I disrespect someone that's continued as they're, they are moving farther east into the home field development. Anything else that may come in around the Flirabon, the old Flirabon property development. So it's just kind of where we are at the time with this finance here and the probably development team as well. So, David, I just want to add, add that history's in there. So I'll turn it back over to you if you want to speak to the meeting the other day.
Well, certainly, I appreciate the overview. This is the, the first coming from, and some of the questions, they were very, very able to answer, but I, I was unaware and appreciative of your sharing the history or historically what, what this, this individual and his groups have done or have not.
David, you're, you're going in and out of coverage, it, it sounds like. So we're having a difficult time picking up everything that you're, you may be trying to say.
Okay, all right. I will, I'll, I'll reserve until we, we get to the next part then, because it's heavy traffic. Okay, thank you.
One thing, last thing, I guess, I wanted to point out, I'm sure the board saw this when they reviewed the packet, is that this developer did not share its financials with us, and that concerns me. So anyway, if I can move right on to the.
Can I add?
Sure.
Somebody asked for my comments. I've got something to say. I have been here the whole week. Standing committee meeting a few days ago. A portion that was raised from the committee from the committee was quite expensive, but of course, we're not, we're not answering properly. But looking back just a little bit, that the amount they'd be questioning is outside our parameters. Number one, secondly, we still got the GNC Canada Community College hanging out there. So folks, we're talking about two major projects, almost simultaneously. We haven't resolved one, now we're talking about another. So I'm just, I'm bad in the board. Those big dollars are according to not being answered at this point. Those are my comments.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So this is Jeff. So I think the only thing that I would add to that is, it, the concern, one of the largest concerns I have is that the parameters of this total project just keep expanding and expanding, and very little has actually been released and opened. So it's, they're just adding more on and more on and more on dollars, but yet they haven't began receiving revenue and to repay. So that, that concerns me from a cost side, that, that there, the possibility of overextension. So in which case, you know, basically donating to something, a project like that, we may never see a return on our investment. So that's all I have. Thank you.
My final comments, I should have got to it earlier, but I want to make sure that I'll at least continue, and I'll ask them before too, if the topic comes up. Communicating with unified government on these type projects too, because, you know, unified government will actually sign some point a development agreement at some phase within these projects, and I think they already have one at least.
They do.
So I did check to make sure also with the bond council or star bond council for the money that they're getting there, to make sure that there's a requirement in there for them to pay for their own infrastructure, and it is, it is in there. So if there's ever any attempt to try to get that changed as part of the provisions for star bonds or within a, in the development agreement of unified government, I would certainly want to make sure the BPU's opposing that, because that'll put us, you know, bad position now and have to argue on something where we do have that protection already, already in place.
Bill, was that, was that requirement on the state level or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the star boss state agreement.
Does anybody else have any comments on the home field proposal?
Yes, if I can, I should just add, I specifically asked that at Economic Development, if in fact, and that was one of my very pointed questions, as to whether or not they were of the, of the comperees of the applicants, is were they going to be responsible for their, their utilities, for their electric and water? To which they said, yes, we will, as far as we know, but maybe something will be coming up. I mean, it's, I, I just, I'm surprised to hear this come up because in open court, I mean, or in the hearing, just on Monday of this week, they, they understood and underscored that they were going to, that they were going to be responsible for their utilities. That's all.
Thank you. We ready to move on to the other?
Yes.
Proposal for me?
The second. The next request is from Central Area Business Betterment Association, and I met with Edgar regarding their request for assistance of $60,000. It was to purchase this Staples building, which is where they are currently located, 1303 Central Avenue. I think they're releasing it one time now. They're purchasing. They have done quite a bit of work to the building. Bill also met with him because the requirement is to have electric, heating, all electric in the building, and the portion that they are going to be working from will, they will install electric equipment. Based on that.
Separately metered too.
Yeah, and it will be separately metered.
So Patrice, is that the area that's not been revamped, sort of in the back? Then that's what the request is for, that area back there. Okay. Separate meter from what's in the front already.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, again, the Economic Development Committee met on this. And, I mean, I suppose I can share our, aren't you the chair of that committee? Didn't you share?
This is, yeah, so the Economic Development Committee determined that CABA is a very great partner in our community. They've done a great job in, in business incubation along Central Avenue, and we feel that they are an excellent group to partner with, so we recommend the approval of this.
So now I'll, I'll move around. Bob, do you have any comments? I know that you're part of the Economic Development Committee, but do you have any comments that you'd like to share with the board?
My comments was very clear. It's unusually forced for us to use money for expanding stuff like that or nicely upgrade the facility. So it's brand new to this board in terms of allocating money for, to fix up the facility. I thought that the question go to the UG government first, then come to us. I'm looking at it as a real estate transaction. First power, if she goes to UG, I have no problem with the amount. And protocol, she goes, one, we should be two. My comment.
Okay, thank you. Mary, did you have any comments or thoughts?
I'm just, just share that I've been down there and witnessed the, like, the work sessions that they've put in, that they have so far, and it looks like it will benefit the community. And to Bob's point, there's not a lot of new building that could really happen in that portion of Central Avenue. So I think they're trying to do the best with what they have.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify one point that, you know, CABA has made this clear to Bill and Patrice and Carlos that, you know, they're, the whole purchase price on this is, is not $60,000. It far exceeds that. And so thi- this money would just be, it's not like the BPU would be purchasing the building. We simply would grant them part of their purchase price money. So just wanted to clear about that. Tom, did you have any thoughts or comments on this one?
That was.
Tom, we lost you there for a minute. You still there?
But with your ex, yes. Hello.
Oh, okay. Sounded like you might have muted yourself there for a minute. You're back muted, friend.
Okay. How are we doing now?
You, you appear to be unmuted.
I am unmuted. I'm sorry. I'm going to put this up on the streets. And there we go. And he's muted.
That we are just a part of the.
Hey, Tom, you're going in and out of mute, and I'm not sure if. I'm not sure if if you're hitting an accidental keystroke or something.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Am I muted or unmuted now?
You were unmuted, now you're muted again.
It just keeps, I'll hit, I hit the unmute, and then it appears that after a few seconds, it just automatically mutes me again for some reason. But I am, I'm in favor of the proposal.
Thanks, Tom. David Haley.
Well, I guess the muting and unmuting happens to the best of us. I, probably that's what I had earlier. But it sounds like it, it's, it's firm to me that it would be good. Again, do you know what portion of the acquisition, the $60,000 comprises? Or, I mean, I know you, are you at liberty to say, and what if any, you know, I, I, I imagine that they're going to be a good partner. They do a lot of good work at CABA, and, and I've been impressed for the time that I, I've known them and been involved with them. I just want to know if there's some sort of residual or a lot of return on, on our contribution to, to the good work that they're doing in the, the building that they'll be obtaining.
No, they talked to Bill about having a dedicated room or conference room for the Board of Utilities to use at any time. They also asked to partnership with us on different programs and events, so if that's what you're asking.
So, so David, one, one thing I talked to, talked to him about is there's a lot of programs that I know the utility has that I don't feel like is getting to the people that we would like to see benefit from some of our programs, and if CABA can partner with us on some of that, give us meeting spaces to allow to meet, meet with some of our customers, now CABA participate in those meetings too, so that it helps us, help the people that we're not quite reaching. And I think those are things that could certainly happen in that part of town. It can certainly happen in other parts of town, but I mean, this is an opportunity right here in front of us for Central Avenue area and in reaching, reaching customers that I think can be those type ambassadors that we're looking for in, for this utility, so.
But comments.
And Dennis just, Dennis just mentioned that we also are asking him and them to help partner with us on recruiting for our workforce in the future. And if you look at our numbers, that population is sorely underrepresented within our workforce. So, and that's important to me personally too, so.
Well, my, my, my point is going back again, one and two. They are part of the N R B's neighborhoods, I'm not correct about that. And all they program is to uplift the neighborhoods. So this is part of what they should be doing anyway. Going back again. UG's to be requested first, you're second. I'm saying that is a good program, but I think that the N R B, by neighborhoods, all their programs uplift the neighborhoods. This is part of that program to be done. Not just to get the primary on the BPU. It's part of that, for the, for the, for the, that's part of their program. Well, as a neighborhood, that's their program, not our program. Okay? Keep it in mind.
Thank you, Bob. So Jeff has given, by the way, just David, I think you asked the question, what their total investment in the building is, and it's estimated to be $750,000. So they're asking BPU for $60,000 grant.
This is Jeff, and by the way, there.
Renovation, that's the, the total to acquire and to renovate.
That, that's the total project, is what it spells out as a total project. Have us total investment in this building is $700,000. So, and, and the total electric and water revenue is estimated to be just under $4,700. So if you look at that, the $60,000 across that, that's 12.8-year repay. So, you know, compared to a lot of the, you know, requests that we get, that's a much shorter time span. Usually, we're seeing a closer to 20 or 20-plus years. So I think that actually that's a fairly mild request.
Good information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. So Jeff has given you the Economic Development Committee recommendation, so this obviously will be visiting again in the regular sessions tonight.
But we will be voting on votes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Will be.
And Angie should have resolution prepared.
I think I saw them on the agenda.
Yeah, she will have a, a resolution. Yeah, she will have her, uh, resolution repaired. If the vote is no, there will not be a need for a resolution. If the vote is yes, then, then she'll have that resolution available. Thank you. All right, we go back to the agenda, please. If there's anything else on it. Thank you, Patrice.
Thank you.
I didn't place anything on there, I didn't, I mean, as far as the gauge, how long these conversations.
I don't have any problem adjourning because I don't want to run afoul of the, it's not on the agenda and we can't speak about it situation.
Unless you want to do your general manager update now.
Okay, I can.
It is on the agenda.
That's true.
Turning my note.
Tell Angie how well we did there.
Yes, I will.
So we met, uh, David Melhoff, Lori. Maybe not Lori, David Melhoff, Angie and I met and I talked to Patrice today. About getting out the, uh, public information for the. Community Engagement Committee, that'll go out tomorrow. Everything's been drafted, it's, it's, uh, ready, ready to go first thing in the morning. Uh, process is, like you guys are still working on, working with Angie on, on a, uh. On a, uh, selection committee. Uh, at the same time, we're going out requesting applications. And then when the applications come back, David is getting that information out, when the applications come back. I'd go to Patrice, she'll collect all that, she'll turn it over to the selection committee and then, uh, there is a. Uh, July. Eight in there.
Yeah, it was forty five days.
Forty five days.
Forty five days.
Right, forty, what, the end of July, I think. But anyway, uh, so that'd be all ready, ready to go, uh, all in there, everything's looked okay to me, uh. I'll look at it one more time before it's sent out, but, uh, wanted to let you know that that's.
Resolving, it's signed, yeah.
Sorry.
The resolution hasn't been signed yet.
But this is the, this is the, this is the, uh, community engagement. Group that the board, as I already agreed to move forward with.
I know that, but it's still, it could go forward.
No, we agreed on it in the last board meeting.
You haven't signed it, I haven't signed it, I didn't see the top of it, it's signed it.
It's not in there, it's not signed in the agenda book, but it is signed and is, and David has a copy of it.
I don't remember signing it.
Yeah, he did.
I didn't test it.
Do you want a copy of it, Bob? Do you want to make a copy?
I saw, saw the copy, it wasn't signed, but it did, I guess, but it could do. Don't need it, fine, move on.
All right, uh. Next thing I have is, uh. We're also preparing all of our final information for the rate hearing meetings next week and, uh. I think Lori or Randy will be sending out testimony tomorrow, Lori, am I right? So, uh, so receive that, you'll get it, get that one weekend in advance of when our meeting starts, so you'll have time to. Review that hopefully, uh.
If I might.
Sure.
Speaking of the, uh. Rate hearing, um, Angie requested that board find two days.
Yes, that's what.
Yeah, okay, very good, okay. She'll let you continue.
That's okay, that's okay, so the plan is to have the rate hearings next week. We're going to ask if, if we, if everything goes accordingly, uh, according to plan. We're going to ask the board to meet on July fifth to approve the rates. And we will have everything set up, ready to go for July first, rate adjustment in our systems. If the board does not approve it at that time, then the rate adjustment will not take place, but at least we want to make sure that the system and the program, everything is ready to go. The first billing cycle will not have blown out by that time. But we will have everything in place for everything to start as soon as the board approves on the field, if not, then we'll. We'll make a determination as to when the board can make a decision on either. Uh, yes or no on, on the rate request that we're asking for and. I guess the first question is. Will all the board members be available on the field to meet? And that's a regular, regular board meeting.
No, my question would be if, if the meetings are, or the hearings are going to be on fourteen, fifteen. How long before all the documentation will make it to the board for us to review all these interveners and?
David, can you pass, share your mic, Bob?
I'm going to need time to sort through all the information coming to us.
So after the hearing, which is nine of the fourteenth, morning of the fifteenth. We'll give the court reporter, probably take until Tuesday of that. Next week, and then we will send you all the transcripts. Um, associated with the rate hearing.
So we would get them probably by the Thursday the twenty second.
I mean.
I don't know how long it'll take the, for you to assemble it all, but, I mean.
To, to the twentieth?
The twentieth is, yeah, so.
Twentieth is when you would have them to you.
Right.
The court.
And electronically.
Yes.
So once we get them electronically, we'll send them out to the board.
Electronically or hard copies?
Depends on what you want.
Or hard copies, because it takes a lot of information to be able to look.
So if we get it early enough on the twentieth, we can have the board, you can have, hurry or deliver it. The twentieth, if we get late on the twentieth, it'll be.
The twenty first.
Yeah, right.
Have all the documentation.
Right.
So that'd give us. Basically two full weeks to review all of the documentation.
Right.
Prior to meeting.
Right.
I'm, I think that that's.
Yes, I'd like a paper copy.
Yeah, I think that's.
Just plan on paper copies. Yeah. So it'll, it'll be extensive.
Can I have both?
Be in both, yeah. I mean, we'll send it both, we'll send electronic, I'll also give you. Thank you.
So I guess first, uh.
So the vote on the rates will be on, uh, July fifth.
July fifth, if all the board members are here, we like to have everybody here.
Yeah.
So I guess if there is any. Any members that may not be able to make it that day, I was going to roll out an alternate day for your consideration.
David, will you be able to make July fifth?
Just double checking, I believe so, thank you.
In the interim, Tom Groneman, are you able to make it July fifth? No, Tom, you're muted.
Okay, I should. I should be able to if, uh, everything goes, uh, as it's going now.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so we're planning on July fifth, Lori. Okay, David? Yes, no? Yes, okay. And, uh, so the fourteen, fifteen, evening of the fourteen, morning of the fif- evening of the fourteen, morning of the fifteen. We're looking at two plus hours, thereabout.
We anticipate that Wednesday evening, the, we have about fifteen, twenty minutes of pre-work. You know, just to introduce, uh, start the hearing. Our presentation is anticipated taking an hour and a half, two hours. Um, and I'll say two hours. Um, and so that would end, uh, with, then we continue the hearing Wednesday night after we're done. Open up the hearing again on Thursday morning at nine AM. We will do our presentation again, uh, staff presentation again. Um, uh, also in that presentation is our two consultants will also have their presentations. So Thursday morning, we will do our presentation again. Just pay two hours, uh, and then after that, we will have our technical, uh, session presentation. We don't think, uh, I'm going to say an hour to hour and a half on that. Uh, Kathy's looking at, instead of us regurgitating yes, no questions from staff. That we sign an affidavit that yes, this is our testimony and this is what we present, so. All right. I gotta repeat that.
Do, do we have anybody signed up as intervenors and how long will their testimony last?
Okay, so, uh, we do have, the Sierra Club has intervened in the rate hearing. Um, they have provided testimony and you'll be getting a copy of that. Uh, they, uh, replied back today that they will have a presentation, so, um. And that will be in the technical portion of the presentation and there's no time limit that. Um, you know, that's set for them in that presentation. But, you know, hopefully they make their point and it doesn't, uh. Drag on, but.
Their presentation will be on Thursday.
On Thursday, yeah, yeah.
And, and what time is, uh, the fourteenth begin?
It begins at seven PM. So.
Eight in the morning for the.
Nine, yeah. Uh, and also part of that, after we give our public presentation on Wednesday night, then we open it up. Uh, you know, we have a question answer period, you know, the, the audience can answer, ask questions, we're going to have them write them down. On little note cards or whatever, we'll answer those questions, then there is a public, um. Comment section, so they have to sign up to a board meeting or whatever, um. So we'll go through that process as well, and then that same process will happen Thursday morning, uh, before our technical session.
On the comment section, is it like our meeting, are they, I can't remember. In the past, are the, or do they get an X number of minutes or are we not doing that?
So, uh, I know we, we talked back and forth today about it, whether we would. Limit them to four or five or whatever, three, five minutes. I think we left it that. We will allow them time to make their comments if they start going off in different tangents and the hearing officer will intervene. And. Ask them to, you know, make their point, basically.
How, how is notice going out that public can participate, did we put it in the bill? I know we talked about putting.
Been on the bill.
It's been on the bill.
Uh, it's on the website.
Okay.
Um.
It was in newspaper.
Was in the.
Echo connection.
Echo.
Yeah, it was in the echo, uh, presented in that, or advertising the echo.
Is it possible to maybe post to the kiosk? It's the, the same signage, just to, I mean, the kiosk here where the main, that notice of public hearing, participation.
We, uh, we can, I mean, they've gotten their bill, it's always been on their bill and they got to have their bill to.
Yeah.
In the kiosk, but.
I.
But we can, we can put a note up.
Be honest, I just read the bottom line with the bill myself, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I just, I just look at how much. So I don't know if anyone else.
We can set something up on the kiosk. It's in there, it was.
I think it is.
That's what I was thinking it was.
Any other questions about rate hearing process?
So as far as interveners. Sierra Club's the only one so far.
And.
You know, for all.
No, and the, the time period for interveners has stopped, uh, basically they have until seventy days prior to the hearing and that was back in April. It's just.
It'll be Sierra Club and then whatever public.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in here.
It's in there.
Nice. Hold out.
All right, so, I mean, there'll be a lot of technical stuff, I did ask everybody to. Just be careful with how. Technical we make things, you know, because. We obviously have people listening and I'm not sure how mu- how much of the public will be in attendance. Certainly don't want to lose them, uh, because they don't hear this type of conversation at all, so. And, um, make sure that they. They fully, uh, are comfortable with what we're asking for. And, uh, hey, Lori?
Um, also, so it is going to be, uh, video as well as aud- audio or whatever, and anybody that is online. Um, you know, can participate in the, uh, public comment and they can also, uh, some, uh, submit their questions by, uh, writing their question in the chat. So we'll be able to. Commit that way.
I think the, for the two items, uh. Reserve back to you if you. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Jeff, so move.
Ms. Mary, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley?
Aye.
Island? Malvany Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.